Good evening. This, the 20th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. I want to ask anyone that have a cellphone, please turn it off or put it on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Sharon Alicia. Did I say that right?
Not quite.
Okay. Last name is Charles. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am Sharon Alicia Childs, also known as Ametel Mava. It is my distinct honor and privilege to yield an invocation before this assembly. A special and heartfelt thanks to Councilman Ryan Dorsey for the invite. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for sunshine in the morn with an impassioned display woven with the strength of a tapestry. We are solemn intension in our works, shaped with courage by your loving hands. Lord, we ask you to embody us with your principles and guide us with embrace on our journey. Lord, we are grateful for your direction and give thanks for keeping us whole and in your steed. Blessed we are by your abundance, by your deliverance. Dear Lord, may we walk with reverence at your mercy and carry your will as vessels of exchange for goodwill and humanity. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, I'm sorry, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Charles, thank you so much for the invocation. I appreciate it. I want to thank Ms. Charles for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Scott, Schleifer, Pinkett. President Young, Scott, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Block, Riceinger Costello, Sneed Clark, Mr. President, we will quorum.
Thank you. Our showcase is council? Do we have a showcase? Oh, okay. We'll move right along. This is the Council Council Generalized invocation. Actual motion, generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Dorsey, second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have, the motion is adopted. We now move to, we will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Ms. President, the general proceedings from the September 25th City Council meeting is on the councilmember's desk.
If their motion approved, the journal. Motion by Councilman Dorsey, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to four of the agenda, executive nomination.
EA 17-0083 Rebecca Woods, member Environmental Control Board District Two.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0084 Philip Lee, member Environmental Control Board.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0085 Scott Richmond, member Environmental Control Board District Eleven.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0086 Susan Francis, member Commission on Aging and Retirement Education District Three.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0087 Barbara Cornman, member Commission for Aging and Retirement Education District Fourteen.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0088 Aaron Murky, member Commission for Aging and Retirement Education District Eleven.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0089 Lloyd H. Buckner, member Commission for Aging and Retirement Education District Fourteen.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0145, City Streets Opening Eight-Foot Alley Extending From the East Side of North Schroeder Street For The Purpose Of Condemning An Opening Eight-Foot Alley Extending Easterly Seventy-Six Point Five Feet More Or Less From The East Side Of North Schroeder Street To The East Side Of A Four-Foot Alley Is Shown On Plaid 329 A Twenty-Four And Office Department Transportation Providing For A Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President On Behalf Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0146, City Streets Closing Eight-Foot Alley Extending From The East Side Of North Schroeder Street For The Purpose Of Condemning And Closing An Eight-Foot Alley Extending From, Extending Easterly Seventy-Six Point Five Feet More Or Less From The East Side Of North Schroeder Street To The East Side Of A Four-Foot Alley Is Shown On Plaid 329, 329 A Twenty-Four A And Office Department Transportation Providing For A Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President On Behalf Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0147, City Streets Opening North Arch Street A Portion Of Vine Street And A Portion Of Ryman Court For The Purpose Of Condemning An Opening North Arch Street Extending From West Lexington Street Southern One Hundred Eighty-Three, Three, One Hundred and Eighty-Three Feet To The South Side Of Vine Street A Portion Of Vine Street Extending From Pine Street Easterly Four Hundred Forty-One Point Nine Three Feet To North Arch Street And A Portion Of Ryman Court Extended From North Arch Street Easterly One Hundred One Feet More Or Less Is Shown On Plaid 345 A Nineteen And Office Department Transportation Providing For A Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President On Behalf Administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0148, Sale Of Property Former Beds Of Water Street And Hollingsworth Street For The Purpose Of Authorizing The Maryland City Council Baltimore Sell, Hid The Public Or Private Sale All Its Interests In Certain Parts Of The Land Known As The Former Bed Of Water Street Extending From Grant Street Easterly One Hundred Fifty-Six Seven Point Three Feet More Or Less To South Calvert Street And The Former Bed Of Hollingsworth Street Extending Southern, Extending Southernly One Hundred Fifty-Nine Point Six Feet More Or Less To East Lombard Street And All The Need For Use And Providing For A Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President On Behalf Administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance And Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0149, Resoning 1401 Woodall Street And 1446 Stevenson Street For The Purpose Of Changing The Zoning For The Property Known As 1401 Woodall Street And 1446 Stevenson Street Is Outline Reddington Company Plaid From The I-1 Zoning District To C-2 Zoning District. Sponsored Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use And Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0150, Zoning Prohibiting Crude Oil Terminals For The Purpose Of Prohibiting New Or Expanded Crude Oil Terminals Throughout Baltimore City Defining A Certain Term And Generally Relating To Crude Oil Terminals. Sponsored Clark Riceinger Cohen, Henry Bullock, Pinkett, Dorsey Middleton, Burnett Sneed.
Please note that Councilman Robert Stokes is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My colleague Edward Riceinger and I are happy to lead off on a very important environmental issue here in Baltimore City. We are all familiar with the travails of transporting crude oil through population centers. It is internationally known to be a hazard when, and a volatile hazard traveling the tracks of our nation. But we in the City Council do not have the power to regulate crude by oil, rail, crude by rail, but we do have land use authority here, and that's how we're approaching this issue. So, this legislation is really three words. It says that at the very top of the list of prohibited uses in the new zoning code will be crude oil terminals. What this means is that those which exist can remain, and there are two, they cannot expand, and new ones cannot be built or created here in Baltimore City if and when with your help this legislation is approved. This is a good time for this initiative because the price of oil is down and the crude oil trading and marketing is at a low. We would like to cap it at the current two terminals right now while the time is right and the demand is not high so that when that reverses itself, we will already have protected ourselves to the degree that we can from this crude oil traffic through Baltimore City. The terminal, the, the lack of new terminals will cap the traffic at what it is in the best of times now, but it will not encourage our tracks to become busier with that trade. So, we thank you for co-sponsoring and we hope that you will continue with us as we try to get this land use changed to the zoning code passed through the City Council and signed into law. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use And Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0151, Resoning 3310 Bridgewater Avenue For The Purpose Of Changing The Zoning For The Property Known As 3310 Bridgewater Avenue Is Outline Reddington Company Plaid From The TOT Two Zoning District To The I-Two Zoning District. Sponsored Middleton.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0152, Food Service Facilities Healthy Beverages For Children's Meals For The Purpose Of Requiring Food Service Facilities That Offer Beverages As Part Of A Children's Meal To Limit The Beverage Options Being Offered Defining Children's Meal Provided For A Special Effective Date And Generally Relating To Healthy Food Options For Children. Sponsored Scott, Costello, Dorsey, Burnett, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Henry is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Ms. Chair, members of the council, Mr. President, this legislation would simply mirror what's happening in major restaurants across the city. If you look at McDonald's and most fast food restaurants or, or other major chain restaurants, what's happening is we understand the, the impact that we have had on children and with diabetes, childhood obesity over the years while filling them up with sugary drinks. But what these restaurants have started to do is simply add in a healthy drink option with their kids' menu. This legislation will only require any restaurant that has a kids' menu to offer a healthy drink option for, for those young people. Or you could just choose simply not to have a children's meal at all. There's no law that requires you to have a children's meal. You can just have a, have a, a menu that doesn't have that on there. So, we are simply doing this, and I want to recognize the folks from Sugar Free Kids who we work with on this legislation, simply doing this for the health of our young people because we know that that above all is the most important thing for our city.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0153, Food Service Facilities On Premise Postings Inspection Reports And Suspension Notices For The Purpose Of Requiring Certain Inspection Reports To Be Posted And Maintained On Food Service Facility Premises Requiring The Maintenance Of Posted Suspension Notices Defining Certain Terms Imposing Certain Civil Penalties And Generally Relating To Regulation Of Food Service Facilities. Sponsored Scott, Costello, Dorsey, Burnett, Clark.
Please note that Councilman Stokes is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we know that restaurant inspections is a topic that has been a, a focus of mine since my time here in the City Council. During the last term, we debated whether we were going to have restaurant grades. We were not able to do that. During that process, we heard from many restaurant owners about posting actual inspection reports, and though we followed up with a piece of legislation that has took the city by storm. If you talk to myself or folks at the Health Department, one of the most popular things that has generated is our health closures that we all get every day because people are now amazed at what they can see when a restaurant is closed. They are amazed that they can go online to look at a restaurant's full inspection report, which for many years in Baltimore, even though it was paid for with their taxpayer dollars, they could not see. Well, if they can see it online, they should be able to see it at the restaurant. It's that simple. This is not a grading system. This is just the same restaurant inspection reports that are available online today will be available at each establishment. And we have to understand, especially in neighborhoods where they're consistently seeing these closures, when they're consistently having places that are operating in different ways, we should be open and transparent about what's happening. And we know that in neighborhoods in east and west Baltimore, they don't have access to the internet like some of us are afforded. Every person doesn't have that access. So, we, it's our duty as the city of Baltimore to honor all of the citizens and open up and be transparent in a way that all of them that can see, and that's what this would do. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0154, City Property Naming The Building Informally Known As Mecu Building To Be Councilman Harry S. Cummings Building For The Purpose Of Naming The Building Located At 401 East Fayette Street Informally Known As The Mecu Building. The Councilman Harry S. Cummings Building. Sponsored Costello, President Young, Scott, Henry Pinkett, Dorsey Burnett, Middleton, Stokes, Sneed Clark.
Please note, Council Chairman Riceinger as a co-sponsor. Chairman Bullock is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the Mecu Building, which is kitty cornered at City Hall at the southeast intersection of Fayette and Holiday Street. The administration approached me a couple months ago and very thankful to the, to Mayor Pugh and her team for working with me, making sure we identified the right person for this. Councilman Harry S. Cummings was the first black elected official in Baltimore City. He lived and worked his entire life in the current 11th district. He did a number of very important things at a very difficult time in our history. One, he appointed the first black student to what was then, or the predecessor to MICA and had to fight that out in the court because the school at the time was reluctant to allow that student in with the scholarship that he awarded the student. He also was a founder of Colored Polytechnic School in 1892, which many of us know today as Frederick Douglass High School in Baltimore. And he's one of the first three black men to graduate from the University of Maryland School of Law. Probably most notably, he was the first black person to second the nomination for president. He was a Republican, and in 1904, he was the person who seconded the nomination for Teddy Roosevelt, who would go on to become president and return the favor by inviting him to the White House. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues for your support and look forward to a hearing.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0155, Zoning Condition Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Unit To Two Dwelling Units And The R-7 Zoning District 2415 West Lexington Street For The Purpose Of Permitting Subjects To Certain Conditions The Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Into Two Dwelling Units And The R-7 Zoning District On The Property Known As 2415 West Lexington Street Is Outline Reddington Company Plaid. Sponsored Bullock.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Transportation Committee. Resolutions introduced. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that I can introduce a City Council resolution from the floor.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules, allow for the introduction of this resolution. Say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, the rules are suspended and the resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 17-0050R. The clerk will read the resolution and to the record.
City Council Resolution 17-0050R, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2017. For The Purpose Of Recognizing October As Domestic Violence Awareness Month Condemning All Forms Of Intimate Partner Violence And Urging All Baltimoreans To Support Efforts To Stop Domestic Violence And Support Domestic Violence Victims. Sponsored Middleton.
Chair recognizes Chairman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. In conversations with Mayor Pugh and you, we thought it would be great just to make sure that we had this awareness and urge all Baltimoreans to support efforts to stop domestic violence and support domestic violence victims. One in four women will be the victim of domestic violence at some point in her lifetime, and on average, three women are killed every day at the hands of a current or former intimate These victims need to know that they can safely seek assistance and that they will receive support and protection that they need so desperately. We in Baltimore have had many cases of just terrible violence with partners that have been murdered and abused and, you know, found it just horrific circumstances. The, I'm going to just quickly read some of the places that people are familiar with that you can go for help, and we just want to make sure and let women know that there is help out there and people you can talk to. We have Turnaround Inc. on, at 1800 North Charles Street. We have My Sister's Place Women's Center on, at 17 West Franklin Street. We have the B. Gaddy Family Center. We have Bond Secure Women's Resource Center at 10 North Pulaski Street. We have Marion House. We have the House of Ruth. And then also, I'm, finally, I'm hosting, and that's next Monday on October 23rd, the Maryland Commission of Women. They're having a listening session from six to eight. You can call my office for, for more information or register and please attend. It's a chance for women to, just to, just to have a discussion of all the concerns and needs that we have here in Baltimore City as women. So, again, I want to thank you.
You want to move for?
I'd like to move for this bill to.
Suspension of the rules to move.
Suspend the rules to move the bill.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All, all those in favor of suspending rules for me to adopt this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, the rules are suspended.
I move the resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, 17-0050R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, this resolution is adopted. You can find the, you can, you can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda, is there mostly approved the consent calendar. Second by Councilman Pickens, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, this consent calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to my special guest, Mr. Keith Bossier.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to Chairman Bullock's guests, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and your guests may take the floor.
I think everyone around here knows this man. Whether you know him personally, you've seen him in our city streets. Many of you know that I'm a runner, and some of us yesterday, we were racing for the cure, and some of us will be running the marathon this weekend. But this is a man who runs every day throughout all of our neighborhoods, and as someone who represents west Baltimore, Harlem Park, and Sandtown, and places this man calls home, Mr. Bossier is really an inspiration. You are an inspiration to all of us. Many of us feel like, like we know you. The fact that you run rain, sleet, or snow, doesn't matter the, the weather, the distance, that you stay committed to it and that this is really a way of life for you. And so, when I told my colleagues, and I told the president that we wanted to do this today, we were all in agreement that we wanted to honor you for the work that you do. Your, your commitment, you know, it, it means a lot to us because there are so many things that are happening in the world, and when there's someone who just exudes positivity throughout all the obstacles, all the challenges, the challenges that you face on a daily, daily basis, but it gives us all hope and inspiration for what's possible. And I know it makes me a better person and it makes us all better people. So, I wanted to make sure that we recognized you today. I want to read this. The City Council Baltimore Resolution, being hereby known to all that the City Council Baltimore offers its sincerest gratulations to Mr. Keith Bossier in recognition of your spirit that inspires Baltimore's neighborhoods. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution presented on the 16th day of October 2017. It's signed by our president Bernard C. Jack Young and myself, and we all are so happy for you and we appreciate the work you're doing.
Everybody want to take a picture with him or what?
Sure.
Why not?
When everybody gets in, when everybody gets in place and you can, you have a couple things you'd like to say, it's your chance.
All right. All right, everybody, hold, hold up.
He's going to say a quick word first.
I would like to let you all know that inspiration is a two-way street and that by the children looking up to me and being inspired by me, it makes me not want to disappoint them. Therefore, they have made a better person out of me. They have made me do what they, what they think is best, and by making me, making a better person out of me, they have brought out the best in me, and I hope that I too can bring out the best in them.
Thank you for your commitment to our city, and thank you all for giving me this opportunity to honor something so important to all of us.
Let's give him another hand. We've now moved the bills on second reading. Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0062, Andre M. Davis, City Solicitor Law Department, District 14.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee hearings on September 27th and October the 4th, 2017. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nominee is confirmed.
EA 17-0063, Henry J. Raymond, Director, Finance Department, District Eight.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0064, Thomas J. Stosid, Director, Plan Department, District 14.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0065, Henry J. Raymond, Board of Directors, Parking Authority Of Baltimore City, District Eight.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0067, Juan J. Barberan, Member, Hispanic Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0068, Marley Cardona Mas, Member, Hispanic Commission, District 14.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0069, Gabriel Casares, Member, Hispanic Commission, District 12.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0070, Fabiola Donato Galindo, Member, Hispanic Commission, District Four.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0071, Flori Maria Guisti, Member, Hispanic Commission, District Five.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0077, Aaron Antomarchio, Member, Civil Service Commission.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Chairman, whose district is this? Oh, this is anybody. Second by Chairman Riceinger. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Housing and Urban Affairs.
City Council Bill 17-0108, Urban Renewal Mount Washington, Mount Mostington Village Business Area Amendment For The Purpose Of Amending The Urban Renewal Plan For Mount Washington Village Business Area To Modify The Boundaries Of The Renewal Plan To Delete Certain Provisions Of The Plan Pertaining To Powers Of Acquisition Connotation Made Obsolete By Section 12 Dash 105.2 Of The Real Property Article The Annotated Code Of Maryland To Revise Certain Exhibits To Reflect The Boundary Modifications Of The Plan And To Reflect A Change In Zoning Upon Approval From Separate Ordinance For A Portion Of The Property Known As 1700 South Road And To Delete A Certain Exhibit Made Obsolete By Section 12 Dash 105.2 Of The Real Property Article The Annotated Code Of Maryland Waving Certain Content And Procedure Requirements Making The Provisions Of This Ordinance Severable Providing For The Application Of This Ordinance In Conjunction With Certain Other Ordinances And Providing For A Special Effective Date.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on September 28th to hear two matters. Will you move them both favorable with amendments? There are amendments on your desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Schleifer. All those in favor of approving this bill as amended, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Resolution 17-0034R, Request For State Action Set A Strong Nitrogen Oxide Limit For The Wheel Abraider Baltimore Incinerator For The Purpose Of Urging The Maryland Department Of Environment To Set A Nitrogen Oxide Pollution Limit For The Wheel Abraider Baltimore Incinerator That Is No Higher Than The 150 ppm Standard On A 24-Hour Average That Has Been Adopted By Connecticut And New Jersey And Proposed In Massachusetts Or If At All Possible Significantly Lower Than 150 ppm In Order To Provide Maximum Air Quality Benefits To Residents Of Baltimore.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are amendments on your desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Chairman Riceinger. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Those opposed nay, the motion is approved, the resolution is amended.
I move the resolution favorable as amended.
Second by Chairman Ross Singer. All those in favor approving this resolution as amended say aye. Those opposed nay, the motion is approved, this resolution is adopted. Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one one five, Corrected Bill Twenty Seventeen, For the Purpose of Correcting Certain Technical Errors and Omissions in the City Code, Repealing Certain Obsolete, Obsolescent, or Otherwise Preemptive Supercedural or Superfluous Provisions, Correcting, Clarifying, and Conforming Related Language, and Providing for Special Effective Date.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting this bill say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero four two R, Informational Hearing, Feral Cats. For the purpose of requesting representatives from the Health Department's Office of Animal Control pay before the City Council to discuss feral cats in Baltimore and whether the city's current approach to feral cats should be modified or remain the same.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we held a hearing on September twenty-sixth with representatives from Barks, Animal Control and the Health Department. It was a very educational hearing. There are no changes that are going to be made to this program moving forward. There are amendments on my colleague's desk. At this time, I'd like to move those amendments.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor approving the amendment say aye. Those opposed nay, the motion is approved, the resolution is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting this resolution say aye. Those opposed nay, the motion is approved, this resolution is adopted. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero four two, Zoning Condition Use Conversion of One Dwelling to Two Dwelling Units in the R1 zoning district variance twenty-three of Ford North Fulton Avenue. For the purpose permitting subject to certain conditions, conversion of one dwelling to two dwelling units in the R1 zoning district on the property noted twenty-three of Ford North Fulton Avenue is outlined in written company plat and granting a variance from certain off-street parking requirements. President Young, Scott Cohen, Dorsey Henry. President Young, Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Block, Ross Singer, Costello, Sotek, New Clark.
Did you say pass? This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero nine, Res zoning a portion of Seventeen Hundred South Road. For the purpose of changing the zoning for a portion of the property known as Seventeen Hundred South Road is outlined in written company plat from the R1D zoning district to the OR1 zoning district. President Young, Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Block, Ross Singer, Costello, Sotek, New Clark.
This bill is approved. Before we move the council, uh, committee announcement, I want to recognize Councilman Nicholas Di Adamo, who have joined us today, former councilman. And delegate Bullock Ali, where did he go? Or he left? Okay. Committee announcement. Chair recognize Councilwoman Mill, Chairman Milton. Or should I say Vice President Milton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a, this one is a re-announcement because we're going to have it televised. It's the committee of the whole, so that's everyone. Bill number seventeen dash zero zero two zero R on Thursday, November nineteenth. I'm sorry, November ninth, twenty seventeen. And again, it's going to be televised and if, it's a, it's the oversight hearing for the private development incentives, incentives. The Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill seventeen dash oh one two six on Thursday, November sixteenth at ten AM here in council chambers. And do we have to move for, I want to move for suspension of rules ten two and ten three.
Second by Councilman, I mean Councilman Burnett. All those in favor say aye. All opposed nay, motion carries.
And this is for the sale of property portion of the former bed of a four-foot alley extension from West Eager Street. Also on Thursday, November sixteenth, we're going to hear City Council Bill seventeen oh one two nine at ten oh five AM. I'd like to suspend the rules, move to suspend the rules ten two and ten three.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed nay. Chair, Chair recognize Chairman Milton.
And this is for the sale of property for the former bed of a portion of a ten-foot alley lying between North Milton Avenue and Rose Street. Also, Bill number seventeen oh one three one on Thursday, November sixteenth at ten ten, I'd like to move for suspension of rules.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed nay, motion carries. Chair recognize Chairman Milton.
And this is for sale of property, former beds of Tawanda Avenue and a portion of Suffolk Avenue. Also, we're going to hear Bill number seventeen oh one four zero on Thursday, November sixteenth at ten fifteen AM. I'd like to move for suspension of the rules.
Second by Councilwoman Costello. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye. Those opposed nay, motion carries. Chair recognize Chairman Milton.
And this is for sale of property, the former beds of North Arch Street, Vine Street and Reeman Court. And lastly, Bill number seventeen oh one four eight on Thursday, November sixteenth, ten twenty AM. I'd like to move for suspension of the rules, ten two and ten three.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed nay, the motion carries. Chair recognize Chairman Milton.
And this is for sale of property, former beds of Water Street and Hollandsworth Street. And that's it.
Any more committee announcement? Committee announcement. Chair recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November fourteenth at two PM on Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 three R. This is quarterly budget briefings with the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. Also, on that same date, Tuesday, November fourteenth at two oh five PM, Budget Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on seventeen dash zero 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 four R. And that's budget oversight, quarterly budget oversight for Baltimore City Public Schools. At both of these hearings, we will do closeout for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen as well as quarter one of fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Just wanted to thank, uh, take a moment to thank my colleague, Councilman Bullock, who helped us resolve a problem that we've had on the council, difficulties in scheduling these hearings with Baltimore City Public Schools because that is the same day that they have their board meetings. So there were a litany of dates that did not work for them. So thank you, Councilman Bullock, for working with me to switch our dates for, starting in two thousand and eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments Committee is scheduled to hold a hearing on Wednesday, October the eighteenth, beginning at ten AM for the recent nominations to serve as a member of the Hispanic Committee. She is EA seventeen dash zero zero six six, Elizabeth Alex, Member. Executive Appointments Committee is scheduled to hold a hearing on October the twenty-fifth, beginning at ten AM for the nominations to serve as members of the Environmental Control Board. There are three additional nominations for this board and the committee will be adding them to the schedule on the twenty-fifth. They are Rebecca Woods, Director, Philip Lee and Scott Richmond, Members. The executive appointments will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November the first, beginning at ten AM to review the following nominations. Commission for Aging and Retirement Education Care Member, Susan Francis, Barbara Corman, Erin Murky and Lloyd H. Buckner. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, committee announcement. Chair recognize Chairman Ross Singer.
President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero one zero seven on Wednesday, November fifteenth at one PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use retail goods establishment located thirty-six zero one through thirty-six zero five Park Heights Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognize, you got, you have one? Chair recognize, committee here, committee announcement? Okay. Chair recognize Chairman Snee.
Thank you. The Labor Committee, I just want to remind everyone, because this is an important one, that the legislative oversight hearing on Thursday, October the nineteenth, beginning at one PM here in the council chambers, for the purpose of requesting that the Department of Finance, Department of Human Resources, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, the Employees Retirement System, the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System and the Labor Commissioner brief the city council on the scheduled twenty twenty termination of prescription drug coverage for all Baltimore City employees. So please remember that.
Thank you. Um, chair recognize, Councilwoman, you have a committee announcement?
No, Mr. President. I think we may have been working things out.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Silence is golden.
Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We have a number of hearings scheduled for the Housing Urban Affairs Committee. First on Thursday, October twenty-sixth at one fifty PM, we'll be hearing zero one two three, which is the franchise Brideway over Linden Avenue. We also have some hearings on Friday, November third, which is outside of our normal time. The first one at one fifty PM is going to be the Baltimore City Landmark Exteriors Chick Web Recreation Center. Following that at two PM will be an informational hearing that will be holding on the MTA's implementation on Baltimore Link. Then on November twenty-sixth at two oh five PM, we will be hearing Bill zero zero three seven, which is city, city streets opening, Eager Street and Ten Foot Alley. That is Thursday, November sixteenth. Also on the sixteenth, at two oh six PM, we'll be hearing city streets closing, Eager Street and Ten Foot Alley. To ten PM that same day, we'll be hearing Bill zero zero three nine, which is city streets closing, North Bond Street, East North Avenue, Broadway and East Lafayette Avenue. To fifteen PM that day, we'll be having Bill zero zero five seven, city streets closing, two-foot alleys bounded by East Twentieth Street, Chester Street, North Avenue and North Castle. That same day, we will have, uh, two sixteen, city streets closing portion of West Twenty-Six Street, that is zero zero five eight. Two twenty PM that same day, we'll be having Bill zero one two four, city streets opening portion of four-foot alley for West Eager Street. Working me. Uh, and also on that same day, the two twenty PM, we'll have city streets closing four-foot alley for east, west east Eager Street, followed at two twenty-five PM by the opening of Water Street and Hollandsworth Street. And lastly, we'll be having, uh, Bill zero one three three, city streets closing Water Street and Hollandsworth Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
I said you working. Okay, we're on regular announcements. I want to wish Councilman Pinkett a happy birthday. His birthday is coming up October the twenty-first, so let's give him a hand. I would, I would, I would ask the Council Glee Club to sing Happy Birthday, but I don't think we practiced today. Also, I want to wish a very happy birthday to our chief clerk, Liam Davis, who is celebrating the birthday today. I want to include Raymond Davison and the victims of the mass shooting in Las Vegas in the moment of silence. And I want to recognize Ms. Barbara Jackson. It's the first time I saw you in a meeting that I've chaired, so I want to welcome you here. And I see Ms. Angie Smith in the back. You know, she have that restoring the village project and want to welcome you to City Hall. Okay. Chair recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, Ms. Jackson is my personal Community Association President, so always good thing to see Ms. Jackson. And you left out the most important thing about Angie. She's a graduate of Mervaux High School, so thank you.
She's the president of the PTA. President of the PTA.
But, uh, on a more somber note, I would like to ask Councilman Milton to honor a moment of silence for the now two hundred and eighty-three victims of homicide in the city of Baltimore. Mr. President, as you know, I spent the end of last week in Louisville, Kentucky with leaders from cities around the country specifically talking about one thing, and that's how can cities do better for the achievement of men and boys of color? And out of these two hundred and eighty-three, we know that the overwhelming majority of them are men and boys of color, so Baltimore must do better. I could stand up here and say that we need to change our strategy, but we all know that. But what we have to do now is look within and see, how can we further that mission? How can we reach those people so that next year, we're not having this conversation about two hundred and eighty-three people, two hundred and eighty-three families, two hundred and eighty-three communities that are suffering with this trauma? Also, I think it's very important that I mentioned that forty-nine years ago today, there were some gentlemen who won the Olympics, Tommy Smith and John Carlos, who decided to do a protest during the National Anthem. And we know that they were basically ran out of their sport, unappreciated, called everything but a child of God by most people in America. And I think it's a shame that forty-nine years later, we're still having the same debate about the same topic in America about how America treats black people. And people are still treating athletes wrong for simply doing the most American thing that you can possibly do, and that is to peacefully protest. Also, I'd like to add, Mr. President, that fifty-one years ago yesterday, Bobby Seale and Huey P. Newton created the Black Panther Party. So those are two things that I think are very relevant in the time that we're living in, especially when we, we see what's happening in our country every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm not going to be here for the next city council meeting, so you won't have to listen to me talk about arts stuff in the next one. I'll be in Chicago, in Chicago for the NACTO conference there. But for now and up to the next city council meeting, I'll tell you about a couple of things going on in the arts. First, this Friday at Red Emma's at seven thirty, it's African Storytelling and Music Night. Red Emma's, of course, up on North Avenue. On Friday, the twenty-seventh, next Friday, full disclosure, my partner, Aaron Fostel, has an opening called A Measure of Place, of a solo exhibition at the Creative Alliance. And the next day, Brandon's reading my mind, by the way. The next day, the same day, six thirty PM, the Baltimore Youth Arts is holding their first annual art auction and Halloween fundraiser. I don't know where that's happening, but you can look up Baltimore Youth Arts, because I hope everybody here makes a little effort to understand what Baltimore Youth Arts is about. The, uh, I want to express some somber feelings about the resignation of Gary Thomas, probably the world's greatest tenor saxophonist, a Cherry Hill native, who played in his early years, nineteen, twenty years old, in Miles Davis's band and has chosen to live his entire life here in Baltimore City rather than migrating to New York City or other centers of jazz. This is a man who, when Herbie Hancock needs somebody to play the gig with him in Tokyo over the weekend, this is the man he calls and he is right here in Baltimore. And having been the chair of the Jazz Department at my alma mater, the Peabody Institute of the Johns Hopkins University, he has resigned that position under rather unfortunate circumstances. Lastly, on a very, very positive note for Baltimore City, several months ago, I went to dinner at a friend's house who, at that time, was living at the Creative Alliance and she informed me and some friends that she had, just the previous day, been to the White House and an invitation she was very surprised to get to meet with the then, this I guess was more than a few months ago now, the then-president and first lady. And you must, many of you have seen by now the announcement that as a result of that meeting, she's been commissioned, a Baltimore artist, to, to paint the portrait of former First Lady Michelle Obama, who in my mind is still the first lady.
Thank you. Chair recognize, Councilman Stokes.
President, the Chick Webb Memorial Rec Center, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues supporting me on that resolution, having an open house November the seventeenth through the nineteenth of twenty seventeen and Friday, November the seventeenth from three to seven, they can be featuring the Dunbar Jazz Band and there would be guest speakers, light refreshments. And on Saturday, November the eighteenth from six eleven, Harlem to President Cabaret and the Jazz Band. And Sunday, you're going to have worship service at the Waters African American Church at four seventeen East Fed Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Snee.
I just want to thank you. On your way out, guys, if you see some masks on your way out and when you're coming in in the foyer, it's, it's about addiction and stories of recovery, so I just ask that you take a look at those masks and read the story because we keep seeing the articles in Baltimore. seeing the articles in the Baltimore Sun talking about, you know, folks overdosing and, you know, we want to save lives. So just take a look at those masks and read about their stories. They're also going to have something on Wednesday, October the eighteenth, right here in City Hall, to tell more about the stories of folks who, who have recovered from addiction. So thank you.
Thank you. And on a last note, before I call the Vice President of the Council, we're all in this council concerned about the murders and the crime that's plaguing our city. And our officers are working short, and I know that they're fatigued. So I'm calling upon the FOP and the administration to get together, and let's get this done. Because we know that in order to reduce crime, we have to get these officers on the street. So it's all about the schedule and who are going to control the schedule, but I don't care about any of that. We want to see more police officers on the streets of Baltimore, and we got to make sure that the FOP and administration work tirelessly to make this thing happen. Because the longer these negotiations goes on, more crime is, is running rampant in our city. And, you know, we're, we're sick and tired of it. I know I'm sick and tired of it. I had two murders right around my home, you know, and I'm, I'm livid, you know, just like anybody else in this city that see all the murders all over the city of Baltimore. Enough is enough. I mean, the majority of us are law-abiding citizens, and we let the two percent dictate to us what happens in our neighborhoods and in our city. We need to start flipping the script, and when you see something, you say something. You tell something. The only way we'll get out of this is if people stop being afraid to tell who's doing the killings and the murders. I have three nephews. None of their killers have been caught to date, and people know who did it. And I'm quite sure that's the story of many people in the city of Baltimore. Until it hit home, then you feel like everybody else feel. You want somebody to tell. So I'm just encouraging the FOP, if you're listening, to come back to the table. I'm not saying you walk away or anything of that nature, and come and sit down with the administration so we can get this thing done. Because it's all about fighting crime in the city of Baltimore, and we're taught of our districts being short. They can't cover the city with seven and eight officers. Chair recognize Vice President Middleton for adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I do the next step, I'd just like to congratulate Dana M. Middleton, that has been appointed as a Baltimore City Circuit Court Judge. She formerly worked in the Attorney's General Office, and I just wanted to give her personal congratulations. Again, that's Dana M. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, October thirtieth, twenty seventeen, and we're going to have a moment of silence for Raymond Davidson and the victims of the mass shootings in Las Vegas, Nevada. And we're also going to have a moment of silence for the, and sorry to say, this number just keeps growing, two hundred and eighty-three victims and, of violence and their families.
Thank you. There be no further business. This concludes the twentieth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.